Ready? Okay, call the city council meeting for Monday, June 8th, 6 o'clock to order. Call please.
Mayor Don Williams.
Here.
Jim Davis.
Here.
Chester Norikus.
Here.
Wes Ryan. Roger Sprague.
Here.
Susan Walke.
Here.
And Kip Ward.
Here. Praise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a quick announcement. It's on a personal nature. I had my eyes adjusted today, and I've got a little bit of dilation going on, and so if I miss a call, I want you guys to call it out, okay? Increase the magnification. All right, we are consent agenda. The consent calendar consists of items of a repeat or routine nature considered under a single action. A counselor may remove a consent agenda item for separate consideration upon request. Should I read through all seven of these? Yes.
I would like to pull number six from the consent.
Six.
I'd like to pull number seven off of the consent agenda.
And I would like to pull three and four, Mr. Mayor.
Four, all right. Any others? That leaves one, two, five, two, five.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I need to declare that, you know that I was gone for a couple of months, but I have read the minutes of each of the meetings, and I watched the video of each of the meetings, so I feel like I'm up to speed and can vote on items that took place while I was gone.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to pull an item? Okay, so then, I guess let's go ahead and read. We're gonna have, one, the minute of meetings for May 11th, 2015. Number two, the Oregon Liquor Control Commission's annual renewal list approval. And number five, contract award elevator upgrade Bradley, and that would take care of that.
Mayor, I would move, adopt consent agenda items one.
No.
One, two, and five.
Two and five.
Second.
And seven. No, you pulled seven.
No, we pulled seven.
Two and five. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for accepting consent agenda items one, two, and five. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? None, so moved. Counselor Walke, first.
I just wanted to point out that on the invasive plant interagency agreement, date should be changed, that the termination date should be changed to December 31st, 2006.
And that's item number six? Okay. Was that your only one?
That was the only one.
Okay, and then who had seven? Okay.
I cannot do it.
Actually, could I ask a number, before you get to number seven? Number seven concerns a matter in which three of you cannot participate, so I guess I just state that the mayor and Counselor Davis and Counselor Walke cannot participate due to-
I can't hear you.
Number seven is the Logan Park matter, and three counselors were prohibited from participation, two counselors due to council rules, and one did a conflict of interest, so I'll just simply announce that for-
Thank you.
... purposes of-
Okay. Counselor Ryan?
Yes, since I voted against this, I can't make a motion. However, I would be grateful if one of those who did vote for this make a motion to reconsider this matter.
Anyone care to make a motion reconsidering this matter?
Be met with crickets, so.
Okay.
Go ahead and vote on the final order.
Okay, and you just pulled seven, and that was it? Okay, so then Counselors Davis, Walke, and myself will be sitting this one out. So the remaining counselors, we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Let's have a roll call on that if we could, please.
What is the motion for?
Consent agenda item number seven, accepting it.
Number 2015.
Final order, 2015-01.
Did we have a motion for number six?
Not yet.
Going down the, oh, I'm sorry, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
No, we didn't.
You did not.
You did.
I do not have a motion for number six.
Oh, you're right. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, we did one, two, and five. All right, so let's, I'm sorry, I guess let's go back to number six. We have a motion to accept consent agenda item number six, amended intergovernmental agency agreement.
So moved.
Change.
With the change to 123116.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, discussion?
Just a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
And Norikus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we're to number seven. I get a motion to accept number seven, final order, number 2015-01.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Here, none, roll call, please.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Abstain.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Recused.
Davis?
Abstaining.
Norikus?
Yes.
And Ryan?
Oh.
Motion carries.
And that takes us to three and four.
Number three, Mr. Mayor's construction awards surf and 22nd intersection improvement, and I would ask Ms. Bradley to come up and give us a description of this project and the necessity for it.
This project, good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Good evening.
If you'd like to use your name tag, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. This project is at the intersection near Ocean Lake School and the SDA School, and what we're doing is an ADA improvement, so we're doing a crosswalk that would go from north to south off in 22nd, and then from east to west on northeast Surf Avenue. And we have ADA improvements and other alignment improvements for that intersection. Right now, it's really a wide, kind of open-type intersection, and so this will make it safer for the school kids, and also it's an attachment to the Head to Bay Trail, and so we'll do an ADA improvement on all three corners. The other corner, which is the northeast corner, we are improving the curb line along that section, and it's all just kind of open pavement right now. So that's the gist of the project.
Thank you. I would move that we approve consent agenda number three, construction awards surf and 22nd intersection improvement.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, question? Roll call, please.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Norikus?
Yes.
Ryan and Sprague?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and number four?
And consent agenda item number four is a contract Head to Bay Trail. Ms. Bradley, a little background on that, please.
Yes, originally, there was a grant from ODOT, and it's, it was in 2009, that we were going to do a bridge on Port, and the cost to the city, for the city's portion of it, was around $600,000, and then ODOT was doing a grant for the other $645,000, and we did not have those matching funds. We were spending the money on the West Devils Lake Road eight-foot trail, which is a bike and ped trail. And when we were doing that project, originally, you know, we went from West Devils Lake Road and then turned onto 22nd Street. Well, there was a section from the bridge on West Devils Lake Road that we put out to bid, and it came in at $425,000, and so we did the sections that we could afford to do. That section was left out because it was complicated with wetlands. It would have had to have been a boardwalk-type project. And so we talked to ODOT, moved the grant from that bridge project over to this project on West Devils Lake Road to finish the actual trail section, and so it would connect on to 22nd and part of the other project I was just talking about, which was on Surf. And so it's 420 feet of boardwalk, and ODOT decided to do the design part of it a little bit differently, and they were asking, that's what this request is for, is asking to pay our portion of the trail for the design work, and then they will carry the construction contract after that. And so we're expecting it to come in around the 425, 450 range, even though the grants for 645, we think it'll still come in similar to what that first bid did. But they're looking at, so this new contractor consultant will be doing the environmental work for us and upgrading the design, so they'll probably be changing the design of it somewhat.
Is there any way, Ms. Bradley, we can wait to approve this when the figure comes in at 400 instead of 761?
No, I, you know, I've pushed this project through their processes so far. They were actually gonna back out of it because of some of the timing on their part, just trying to keep this money in place, and so I think if we delay this part of it, we did go through a selection process, it's ODOT selection process for consultants, and so they gave us three consultants to review their applications, and so we've been through that process. We already have an agreement with them that we signed, and so any delay, we have a certain amount of time to be able to get through this environmental, so I think it would probably just kill the project.
And tell me again, the expected cost, you're expecting it at 400 and what?
I'm expecting 450 to probably 500. The actual grant is for 645, not to exceed 645,000.
And if it comes in at 450, will our costs go down?
Probably not for the, not for the amount that we're looking at for the design part of it, because that'll already be, that portion was what we're, that was the city's share, it was our 20% share, and that was at the 645, and then we also had 4,000 in-kind services for our engineering services through the project, so that number is, that's the set number.
I wish you could give us a guarantee on that 400 or 450, and I understand that you can't.
I can't, I'm, you know, it just depends on how the pilings are board under this boardwalk, because it's right along the wetland section.
And I understand it's expensive to build on wetlands.
It is.
And I appreciate all the work you've put into this, and I'd love to see this boardwalk.
Yeah, it's gonna have a little more of a description of what it will do, so it'll be the 420-foot boardwalk over the creek and wetlands, and when it's completed, it'll include a view bubble. It will be an ADA standard so that folks can, you know, park and get out onto this portion of the boardwalk and be close to the wetland area. So that is, you know, just tying in the path right now, you walk along a small shoulder that's probably a couple feet wide, and then it drops off into the wetland. So this will go along the backside of the bridge. There's really no pedestrian way on the bridge, it's just the two travel lanes. It's a narrow bridge, so this will actually go on the backside of that bridge and then terminate at 22nd Street where you cross 22nd to the trail that goes up, up the hill west on 22nd Street. So it was, it was the vision of the Head to Bay Trail section in our master plan.
Well, as difficult as it is for me to do, I'm gonna move that we do not approve the professional services agreement for design, environmental, and permitting services. Well, that's not the, that's not what I want to do. I wanna, I don't want to approve the project, not just the services agreement.
I might ask? I'm not up to speed on this project. This is an ongoing, ongoing, ongoing project, so perhaps you could bring me reasoning here. What's your thinking on this project?
It's just, it's at 761,900 dollars, that's $1,800 a foot-
Right.
-for a boardwalk, and I just can't stomach that.
And I guess the question I would have is the need, what-
Well, it's part of the Head to Bay Trail, there's not a good shoulder or walkway, it finishes our path, and, you know, the funding will just go to somebody else's project similar to this in the state.
And you anticipate, and I guess you can't, but I'm gonna ask anyway, will costs ever go down on this? Is there anything about this that says these costs are high for this project?
I think that construction costs will come in, you know, lower than the 645. The last time it was bid, and it will probably be similar to what that was, that was bid, it was 425,000.
And then again, the money will be coming from?
From ODOT. It's from the scenic byway program.
ODOT's gonna pick up?
Yes, our portion is the 125, and if it does come in, you know, our risk is spending that money upfront for the design, and it can go to bid, and if we're not happy with the bids, we can always stop at that point and just say no. So we do have another, another chance, because it comes back to council, even though it's state funds, it comes back to council for approval. We've signed this, you know, the previous agreement with ODOT.
But so no matter what the costs are, the city's cost is gonna be 125?
It's gonna, it's gonna be that 125.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I was really concerned when we first expanded that coast trail and it got to that bridge, that nice wide sidewalk, and then it stopped, and people had to walk around, like you say, on that two-foot edge along that narrow bridge, and I've just been waiting for the day that somebody gets killed on that, walking there with somebody getting too close to them.
Well, and people, it's a destination, people are going there to bike and-
That's right.
-run and, you know, run with their strollers or, you know, whatever, to try and put them back out in the traffic lane.
And so for that reason, I, I'm willing to take the gamble that it comes in either at or low, lower than, than the projected cost on that. I think it's, it's worthwhile enough to go ahead and do that.
That, no, I'd make a motion to approve consent agenda number four.
Second. Ah, you jumped ahead of me. We have a motion and a second, approve number four of the consent, consent agenda item, the title here in front of me. Bay Trail. Discussion?
Since, Mr. Mayor, since we're gonna have another shot at it, Lila, I'll, I'll go ahead and vote to approve it.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Norikus?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
And Walke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, and Counselor Norikus, thank you for the input on that.
Thank you.
Very helpful. Thank you, Lila. Okay, did we go through each one of them? All right, real good. All right, we are now at the comments from citizens present on agenda and non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, and the city recorder will use the light system. Do we start the light system working? We do. Speakers may not yield their times to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak. We will start with Ken Rollatt. And again, just if you'll each just speak your name into the microphone, these supposedly have been improved, and we should be picking everyone up, but no guarantees.
Ken Rollatt, Lincoln City. I'm here to chat a little bit about the recent votes that we had. I think the feeling in the citizenry out there, the registered voters of Lincoln City is things have been going in the wrong direction for quite some time, and the recent referendum on the VRD issues in Devils Lake kinda let the feeling of the people be known. I think it was an awakening that people want their voices heard, they just don't want a rubber stamp on the council, but they actually want to interact, they have opinions, and they want to be heard. I think that it behooves the council to listen very carefully, not to yourselves, but to the constituents out on the street. Walk up and down Main Street, north, south, east, west, listen to what the people have to say. I sat in city council meetings, economic task force meetings, and the same numbers were rolled out for the last two years, that 68% of the people didn't want more VRDs, they thought we had too many, yada, 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 when in fact, the vote of the people came out 52 to 48. So 52% in favor versus the numbers that were rolled around as 68% against, that's 120% swing. Now, to get those kind of numbers, somebody obviously missed the boat in a really, really, really big way. So again, you know, I encourage mayor, council, members, city employees to do a much better job as far as getting a pulse of the people. Go out, walk up and down the streets like I did, talk to the folks. I didn't find one person walking up and down the streets admittedly talking to business people that in fact thought that this referendum and the issues that were put forward were a good idea. Obviously, the 120% swing in the vote spelled that out. I think there's an easier way to handle the issue. We have 196 pages of proposed regulation, and it's convoluted, it's a mixed bag, nobody has any idea what's going on, how it's gonna work together, it's punitive as the dickens, you know, to be excluded, somebody could be excluded after having a VRD for 20 years and then turn around and have to pay 2,500 bucks to get back in to be considered. I mean, it's crazy. So those things need to be worked out. The simple thing to do, Newport has a very simple seven-page ordinance, it's very simple. You pay your fee, you have your inspections, you pay your TRTs. If you're not discriminated, discriminated against anywhere in the city, you can apply, you can be considered, you can be granted a license. You know, they handle it in a very simple and easy fashion, much like opening a shop in Lincoln City. You got an empty storefront, great, go down, pay your fee, open your shop, you're good to go. That's the way, in fact, that it should be. So I would like to see the council, I'd like to see the council consider and listen to the people a little bit more carefully than perhaps the past. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Caden?
Thank you. My name is Paul Caden, I live in Otis, and I've been a long-term volunteer with the Salmon Drift Creek Watershed Council. And tonight, I'm here to thank the city for doing something that's helping support something that's been really dear to my heart for a number of years, the Doggie Pot Program. I hope you're familiar with the dog cleanup stations at some of the beach access points and some of the, some of the parks. The Watershed Council started this program about 10 years ago, it quickly expanded it to putting stations in at 10 beach access points. Subsequently, the city has put some stations in at about five parks, open space areas, five stations, five additional stations. Our program, for the 10 years that we've been running it, has been run by volunteers with donations to buy bags. Unfortunately, in the recent years, our donations have lagged, and we haven't been able to keep enough bags out there, and people have complained that there just aren't any bags available. So I, and I think you would strongly agree that, you know, this is a good program, I think if any of you, you know, our beaches are a big draw, we need to keep our beaches clean of waste. It also helps the city sell, sell the city as a, as a, as a dog-friendly community. A lot of people come to the city, to Lincoln City, just, you know, to enjoy the beach and bring their dogs with them and enjoy the beaches. So I recently talked with the city manager and VCB director, Ed Driedstadt, about the problems that we were having financing the program with our, with our volunteers and donations. And I'm really happy to report that the city stepped to the, to the table and has agreed to take over and maintain the, keep, keep bags in these, in these stations. I think it's a big step, I think it's a really important program. It helps the city advertise itself as dog-friendly, a lot of hotels advertise themselves as dog-friendly, and we have the mutt, annual mutt master event, and I think it's just the right move, and I'd just like to thank the city for doing this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, Paul.
And Mark Deason?
Mark Deason, I own property on Southwest Beach Avenue. So I'd like to basically put a second on what Ken just said. I think that we need to, it's time to forget about the past and move on. I understand that there's another alternative ordinance that may be presented before council, and I'd like to ask that council considers the Newport ordinance. I understand that there's, there's probably some, some minor things that need to be changed in it. And I think, as you know, I'm involved in the Lincoln City Vacation Home Association, and we are prepared, we will be prepared by next city council meeting to present a modified version of the Newport ordinance, if council would like to consider it. As was previously mentioned, this ordinance is already written, it's already been approved by a local authority, and it has history behind it, so please consider it.
Thank you, Mark, appreciate it. Did not sign up, there's- Did not sign up, that would like to take a time, well, okay. Got his hand up first here. Feel free to just kind of come and take the front row if you want, we'll get you there.
Good evening. Edward Clements, 6534 Southwest Fleet Avenue. Honorable mayor and councilors, just wanted to discuss a very important letter that was submitted to you today by Mr. Ross Smith. He's my neighbor down in Cutler, and a concerned property owner. And he was outlining some of the issues in this letter that we are facing in regards to the VR zone that you are deliberating on later tonight. And in case you haven't had a chance to review it yet, let me quickly summarize this letter, if I may. Mr. Appicello has misadvised us and the council that creating and applying the VR zone are quasi-judicial matters. They obviously aren't. Mr. Appicello misadvised us and the council that ex parte communications are not allowed. They are. Mr. Appicello has misadvised us to follow council rules 12.2 instead of rule 12.5, which we should have followed instead. And Mr. Appicello did not inform us that creating the empty VR zone and rezoning properties to VR are two distinctly separate legislative acts. They are. There is a legal obligation to correct the mistakes found in the public record and in past minutes. We've been misinformed that a VR zone is a commercial zone. It is obviously not. We've been misinformed that a VR zone would allow an owner to have multiple VRDs. They still can't. And Mr. Appicello misinformed us that Luba has approved council to zone property as VR. They didn't. There may have been destruction of evidence, so you are encouraged to open an independent investigation and to contact the Oregon Government Ethics Commission to follow up. And finally, the letter urges council to vote no on any VR rezoning. Furthermore, Mr. Townsend's council communication memo encourages councilors to delay or discontinue city-initiated rezoning efforts in light of the election result. And I'll read some excerpts from this. "The referendum in May overturned ordinance 2014-22, Alternatives and Options, and ordinance 2014-23, License Ordinance Changes." However, and he goes on to discuss some of the terms throughout that paragraph. "However, because the ordinance were proposed as a compromise package, the council may wish to delay or even discontinue the city-initiated rezoning effort to reevaluate. At a minimum, staff will need to draft an ordinance amendment to the license ordinance, chapter 5 dot 14, to address the existence of the VR zone, since the repeal of ordinance 2014-23 negated such changes. If the council wishes to discuss the matter before proceeding, council should postpone the consideration of the ordinance. Given all this," this is back to my point, "given all this, it's now abundantly clear that it's in our city's best interest for council to encourage Mr. Appicello to find gainful employment elsewhere." Thank you for your service.
For your time. Mr. Hoover?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for your time. Jim Hoover, 3150 East Devils Lake Road. I'm a property owner in Lincoln City. For about two years now, I've been asking a question that I've yet to hear a definitive answer on, and that's what's the problem with VRDs? It's kind of been a floating answer that really has never been qualified, but I think it really bears considering when you're talking about the issues you have before you. So since I haven't received an answer, we'll just propose that there is a problem with a VRD, whether it's noise, or trash, or parking, or number of people, or whatever it might be. And what I'm here tonight to talk to you about before the hearing is if there's a problem with a VRD, why would we want to allow that VRD to exist for 30 days, or 60 days, or 180 days, or 365 days by creating a VR zone? You know, personally, if my mother lived in town, or if I had a house in town that I was living in, and there was a problem with a VRD that we weren't addressing by a VR ordinance, which just simply allows them to be there outright, I don't see that that would be an acceptable solution by the city council in solving a problem. So once again, we're under the premise that there is some problem that we're trying to solve, but by creating a VR zone, we're allowing that problem to sit there. And indiscriminately, not because we've done an evaluation of where these bad VRDs exist, or where good VRDs exist, or what makes a good VRD, or what makes a bad VRD, we've somehow arrived at a piece of property, one large portion which is owned by a developer, and we've decided that we're going to make that the VR zone, and everything else is going to have to go through a set of hoops to request to be a part of that VR zone. I would just present that, you know, that doesn't seem like a very scientific process or a process that really serves the public in any process, that has an outcome that would be acceptable if I was a neighbor to one of those people in the VR zone. And while I think people have the right to have VRDs, and while I think we should be addressing any problems with VRDs, I don't see how just coming up with a VR zone addresses any of those problems that apparently we have because we're doing a lot of work and spent a lot of time over the last six years to talk about, but we still haven't solved. We haven't solved parking, we haven't solved noise, we haven't solved trash, we haven't solved landscaping, because all those have already been solved. So apparently, there's something else that sits there that is unresolved, that somehow by saying yes and no, by an area, not by any other criteria, we're going to magically solve the problems that people put six or seven years' worth of time into. You know, it just seems really crazy to me that this is where we're at today. You know, if I have a house on one side of the street that was built by the exact same builder as the house on the other side of the street, by the logic that's been put forth, somehow my house, if it was in the no VRD zone, would be negatively affected by the house that's in the VRD zone across the street. Why should the line be drawn there? You know, at the same time, if the house across the street is allowed to give VRD and supplement their income, it's worth more. So once again, I don't see how VR zones at this point, especially given the vote of the people, are going to solve any problem with an existing VRD, and I'll be glad to give more testimony later. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who did not sign up that would like to take time to speak tonight? Going, or did you care to speak? You're looking like you should, please come forward. Just in case you missed the intro five minutes, state your name to the microphone and we're using the light system.
Okay, thank you. My name is Wallace Rogers. I have a VRD in Olivia Beach, and I just wanted to speak in support of the VR zones. Thought it was a creative solution to a sticky problem. I've come and testified before you before, earlier in the last year. I went away to earn an income, and I want to come back to the coast. And I'm not a corporation. We're just a couple. We did okay, and we wanted to come back and have a house here. It's where we grew up. So I hope you don't think everybody's a corporation or a big financial interest, but this is our land of opportunity. Your kids will leave and come back, probably. I could have been a logger or a fisherman, but I went a different path. But I still love it here, and I still want to come back here, and this is the kind of opportunity, I hope you keep that in mind, there's folks like us. We would like, we bought another house, too, and we would like to do a VR on that, too, so we can help pay for the house and the income from that, and come back here. So I just want to encourage you, I thought it was a really good solution to the problem that was presented before. I like that folks worked on that, so thank you, and good job on the folks who put the effort in on the VR zones.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. All right, anyone else who would like to speak?
Your honor, just for the record, to the extent that we had comments about vacation rentals, we have an open record on the east side, we'll have a hearing tonight. We have a closed record and hearing on the northwest quadrant, and we have an open record for written submissions on the southwest quadrant. So.
Just so I'm clear, open record, east side, closed record on northwest?
Northwest, and closed hearing on southwest.
Closed hearing, southwest. But still taking written on southwest. All right. Everyone up to speed on that? Okay, all right, thank you so much. All right, then we are moving forward. We are at public hearings. Opportunity for public comment on water and sewer rate increase.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
If the staff could, we'd like to take just a brief minute before the public hearing on each of these to just give a little summary of what it's about, if you're okay with that.
Good with that? Go right ahead. Thank you. The light system will be in effect. Pardon me?
During the budget meeting, one of the comments that came up and was discussed quite extensively was the timing in which we held our any proposed rate increases in our water and sewer rates. And the discussion centered around whether or not we should do that at the time the budget is proposed to be adopted by the city council, or whether or not it should take place afterwards. In discussion with our staff, one of the things that I learned is that we generally have held that, a public hearing on rate increases in July. And there wasn't, we couldn't find any reason why it couldn't be done at the same time as the budget. So we have moved that up so that we would have a public hearing and the rate increase resolutions for the water and sewer rates. The budget proposes a 4% increase in water rates, which comes to 85 cents per month, and a 6% increase in the sewer rates, which is $1.34 per month, or $2.19 if they come out. In addition, there is on the consumption fee, a 13 cent increase on when you begin to consume the water, and it's measured in 100 cubic feet or 748 gallons. So before you, tonight, that's the purpose of this public hearing, is to take comment. Later in the meeting, you'll have a resolution before you that will, that includes this rate increase. Do you have any questions of us?
On the water rate and sewer rate?
This would be on the water and sewer rate.
Well, if I remember right, former mayor Anderson brought up thoughts of, and help me, gentleman and lady, his proposal was the way to make this, it's going to just happen, because we need this increase each year, but to make it, does this ring a bell to anyone, what he brought up, because I'm not remembering the word?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
For about almost 10 years, we went without an increase.
Right.
And that found us way behind.
Right.
And so we were forced to pass a much larger increase than we would like to have passed. But by doing it incrementally now, year after year, or every other year, it softens the burden.
Right.
And you're right, we do need to increase it because the cost of operation continually increases.
Right, and I think that was just the general discussion for the public's consumption, that it's, we're still way behind other municipalities as far as our rates, and the increases are less than most. And I guess it was just a preemptive strike, just to say, it's going to happen every year. It's just going to have to happen. Our costs are going up, repair costs are going up, maintenance costs going up. And I guess I just wanted to kind of reiterate that to people, not that I'm in favor of bills going up, but you definitely have your input, and more than glad to hear it, but I'm just kind of letting you know, this is kind of the path the city's on, and sure like your input on it. Did I characterize that properly? Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, so we're still, anyone that cared to speak on that from the public?
I guess as a member of the public, I have a little bit different view, Ken Rowlett, Lincoln City. And that is that, you know, Citizen watchdog Jerry Warner has been very proactive in coming forward with budget numbers, surplus properties, and I have the highest respect for you folks and for new city manager Ron Chandler. I think he's doing his best to work through it. Still hasn't been through a budget process, so I'm going to give him a free pass. However, I just want to let you know that when you have more than $50 million in excess properties, which is totally egregious anywhere, anytime, anyplace, for a city the size of Lincoln City, I'll tell you what, I'll pay you the three bucks in the increase, and near as I can tell, you owe me about $6,000 of that surplus back, and I would be happy to take your check in the back of the room after the meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rowlett. Anyone else care to speak on this matter? Okay. Then we move on. This is a public hearing to receive public comment on a city-initiated proposal to rezone 277 tax lots. We have to close that public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to close the public hearing.
We got to open and close each one of these?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to close the public comment period for the water and sewer rate increase. Discussion? Do I need a roll call, or just all in favor? Just a voice, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. So carried, motion carried. I had a letter from someone that said I wasn't saying it right. It's motion carried.
Yes.
Motion carried. I will get to that. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to open the public hearing to receive public comment on a city-initiated proposal to rezone 277 tax lots totaling approximately 67.8 acres in the northeast and southeast quadrants of Lincoln City to the newly created comprehensive plan and zoning map designation of Vacation Rental District VR, planning file CPA and ZC 2015-02.
Mr. Mayor? Please. On all of these VR items we have tonight, action results, I would really like to hear from our attorney before any discussion.
Concerning?
Concerned.
Specifically, what would you like to hear about?
Exactly what it all means.
Oh, boy.
You know, I wouldn't mind tabling these for another 30 days or so until we had a chance to do that. It would go out on our plate tonight.
I would prefer that we do that maybe in an executive session or a work meeting rather than here tonight.
No, I totally agree with that.
Okay, so no motion, and you don't need to hear from him tonight on this? Okay. Okay, then we won't do it in the executive session. Thank you. So I guess you're up.
Do you need the introduction to the hearing?
Yes, we have a script, I believe, for. Oh, sorry, thank. Okay. City of Lincoln City, City Council, June 8, 2015. It is now 6:47 PM. The public hearing for file CPA and ZC 201502 is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to rezone portions of the northeast and southeast quadrants of Lincoln City to the recently enacted Vacation Rental Zone. The proposal is to amend the comprehensive plan map and zoning map to rezone 277 tax lots totaling approximately 67.8 acres, which are now zoned single-family residential R1 to a newly created comprehensive plan and zoning map designation of Vacation Rental District VR. This proposal is the last of several city-initiated rezoning proposals by quadrant to apply the newly created VR zone. On May 5, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter. On May 19, the Planning Commission deliberated and forwarded a recommendation which staff will discuss in their report. The city council's role is to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation, the record, and any written or oral comments or testimony, as well as information from staff, and make a decision. The city council may adopt the Planning Commission recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take other action, including declining, to make a decision. The council must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Some may believe that this proceeding, okay, some may believe that this proceeding or parts of it are quasi-judicial. If you believe these proceedings are quasi-judicial in character, the following procedural safeguards will be observed as any member of the council wished to declare an ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias in this matter. Done, we go to five. Any member of the audience wished to challenge the qualifications of a counselor to participate Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a counselor to participate in this matter? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the city council to consider this matter? The following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to City Code and ORS 197.763-5. Staff will now read a list of the applicable substantive criteria for this decision.
The amendment must be found to be in conformance with the statewide planning goals, the comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance.
All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the applicable, applicable substantive criteria previously listed, or such other criteria in the plan or land use regulations, which the person believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals, on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the decision-maker to respond to the issue precludes any action for damage in Sixth Circuit Court. Prior to the end of this hearing, any person who participated may request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. A brochure outlining procedures is at the entrance to the council chambers. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows. Preliminary matters and required statements, staff reports, questions of staff, public testimony, requests of continuance, or to leave the record open, close of the hearing, close of the record, deliberations, and decisions. The city has established some time limits. Following the staff report, any person may speak up, for up to three minutes. If the council has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name. If you also have written testimony to submit into record, please provide a copy to the recorder. End of preliminary matters and required statements. Begin the hearing. Please present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, this is, as the mayor just said, the third of the quadrants, incorporation, actually, two of the quadrants, two of the four quadrants for the city, looking at where we may put the VR zone. It is a proposal to rezone some R1-zoned property to the VR zone. 277 lots, 67.8 acres, and as it says, the R1-zone, the single-family zone only. There's no RM-zone, or no multifamily, as was said in past hearings on the other quadrants. That's because it would be a downzoning of RM, be allowing less things than are allowed now. And also, in this case, there's no RR-zone, which is Recreation Residential. There are a couple of areas in the city that are zoned RR. I'll show them on the maps, but it's another single-family residential zone. But just to sort of set the stage, in the city, on these maps, the R1-zone is in yellow or orange, so we have this big area of yellow here, that is R175-zone, 7,500 square foot minimum lot size. And because that is north of Highway 101, which runs down along the bottom here, and east of Logan Road, Logan Road in this area is the divider between northeast and northwest, excluding roads ends, so this area, which is principally the villages of Cascade Head, Lincoln Palisades, and the golf course, and so on, is actually in the northeast quadrant. Then continuing south, there's, again, the highway is running down, down here, the red is commercial, but the yellow, single-family, yellow, single-family, and we're getting a couple areas of orange, which is also single-family, it's R1-zone, it's R1-5, which is a 5,000 square foot minimum lot size, compared to the 7,500 for the yellow. The pink is Professional Campus, it's principally where the hospital is. Brown is multifamily. And continuing to the south, again, more, more yellow and orange here. I should show you up here, this area is a small area with this loop, just 20, north of 28th, and 29th Streets, that is zone RR, it's a small area of RR zoning. And down here, just south of the lake, the mall is just right here at the bottom, in this red, General Commercial Zone, this is also RR-zone. And a small area of R175 zoning here, again, the mall is here, the Buy Mart is here, and then a large area of R175 zoning through here, again, the highway running, running down through here, so we're, again, we're dealing with the east or to the right of the highway. The consensus committee, in their deliberations or recommendations on what they call the yes-no zones, the yes being where vacation rentals will be allowed outright, and no would be where they would be completely prohibited, they've recommended that the area of the golf course be yes, and the rest of the villages, and Lincoln Palisades and so on, be no. An area here at the end of 39th, on the lake, be yes, and, and these, basically, everything east of West Devils Lake Road, that has a single-family residential, they recommend it be yes. Indian Shores, exception to that, and also, as part of the Ocean Lake area, is, the yellow one here would be no, the green is, is yes, what the consensus committee recommended. And they recommend everything south of the lake, of the river, be no. Staff recommendation, it was what the, what the Planning Commission deliberated on, and then made the recommendation to you on, is that the residential areas of the golf course be yes. Again, just to remind you what the consensus committee did, they recommended the same areas be yes, as well as the golf course itself. It's a practical matter, there's no difference where the houses are versus where, or could be, versus the golf course. This map shows in red lots that have, are developed but don't have sewer. One of the criteria for the VR zone is that the lots have to be served by sewer, so these areas are ineligible for, for the VR zone. The, going down to Regatta Park, the areas in, in blue here are what we recommended, or what staff's recommending be, be the VR zone. Along this, along the lake here, again, they, the consensus committee recommended all these areas be yes, but again, we have the problems with, some problems with the, with sewer. Down in Regatta Grounds, down here, excluding this area over here that, that doesn't have sewer, the recommendation between staff and the consensus committee are the same. Excluded this area, 32nd, 30th Street, this horseshoe area, the lots shown in green on here are ones that when the yes-no zone was first being considered, they signed a petition to be excluded, and so, that's reflected in, in the recommendation that the area not be included, and as are these other areas with no sewer. Then, going further south, this is Bayview Development, and then areas of Taff proper, I guess, 48th Street coming in here, the staff has recommended these be yes, and the consensus committee recommended they be no. So, the Planning Commission considered these, had a hearing, took, I think, 10 people, testified, and there was also a substantial amount of written testimony. They recommended that they not, they're not, no properties in the southeast or northeast zones, quadrants be rezoned. Their principal reason for that was that these are strongly residential areas, and should stay that way. The vote was six to one. The one dissenting vote was principally due to the one, the Kaufman property at the Regatta Grounds. The one dissenting commissioner thought that that was one place that was essentially perfect for VR, especially since the property owner of the VRD lives on the same site as, as the existing VRD that's there now. So, now it's over to you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, may I add a little bit more, please? Since the election, which changes things significantly, as you know, two of the three ordinances that were adopted were overturned, and became null and void as a result of that election. Since that time, I've been visiting with you and with the staff about how to proceed on that, and the recommendation that I have made is that we spend a short amount of time, a little bit of time, conducting various reach-out to our community to ask the question, why? I've heard a lot of people who have given me their reasons why, and a lot of assumptions as to why everybody else voted the way they did, but, but all we really know at this point is that people simply, 52% of the voters simply said, no, we do not want to have, or we want to overturn these, these zones. So, one of the things that I'm proposing with, with all of the city-initiated zoning that's before you, is that you do not proceed until we have a little bit of time to go and reach out to our community. We've identified many of the civic and business organizations, neighborhood organizations, throughout the community. We're prepared to now begin to start and set up meetings to begin to do that. I'm requesting that you allow me to work with our staff to, to go forward with that, and to simply just not go forward with the city-initiated zoning of the VR until we can answer the question as to why, and then bring back to you what we learned, so that you and the Planning Commission can then begin to look at how or if the ordinances as they have, as they currently exist should be modified. One of the other reasons for that is that it's been a long time since we've talked about the old ordinances. All of our discussions have been on the new ones, and it would be good to have, to use these presentations and discussions to say, here is what it exists as it exists now, in the different areas of the community. So, there's a, if you agree to that, there's a couple of things that you would be able to do to, to not proceed. You could simply on this, in this case, take the recommendation of the Planning Commission and not approve the rezoning when that comes before you. The second is that you are actually the applicant for the zone, and you can, for the zoning change, and you can withdraw your application, and that in and of itself would stop the procedures from going forward. At a later time, if you want to begin back a discussion, or to begin back the, a city-initiated rezoning, you're, you're certainly able to do that, but as I mentioned, at this point in time, I think there is a need to reach out to our community members and spend a little bit of time, not a long lengthy period of time, just simply asking why, and gaining that information. My hunch is, my guess is, we'll see patterns in their answers, and then we'll, and then we'll bring that before you, so you can begin to, with the Planning Commission, to deliberate on how to proceed.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. I just want to say, I appreciate your approach.
Mayor? Before, we were to vote on either one of those, don't we need to close the public hearing, and then?
You still have a public hearing that you need to, yes, you still need to continue with it. The public hasn't had that chance yet, so you still need to do that, yes.
So, someone help me out, where are we at on that, then? Public hearing is still open.
I don't know if you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Townsend?
Or for Mr. Chandler?
And then we'll go sit down.
No, I would just have more comments than questions, so I appreciate your effort on this, thank you. Anyone else? Questions? Nope. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
You're at number 10 on the script, Your Honor.
Number, number 10 on the script is where you are. If I could ask a favor, Mr. Appicello, could you address the chair? I don't know who you're talking to, when you just talk.
Yes, I said, Your Honor.
I didn't hear you.
We're at number 10.
Thank you. Now's the time for public testimony. I'll call names for the sign-up sheet first, and then ask if there's anyone else who'd like to speak. I think you've got the only microphone that isn't, because I'm not hearing you at all. Okay, I don't have a sign-up, or nothing. Anyone care to speak on this matter? You know the routine, guys.
We've waded through, Kenrolet Lincoln City, we've waded through an awful lot, and it seems like the farther we get down the pike, the worse it gets. You know, after doing a lot of research and talking with a lot of groups, and there's a lot of groups in the community that, you know, when we got to the referendum point and the direction, felt that we were definitely going in the wrong way, we had some bad guidance, and I'm gonna talk specifically, which I usually don't do, but I'm gonna talk to the issue of the city attorney, and I'm gonna ask the council to suspend, city attorney Appicello, he has quoted every, he has, excuse me.
I, I have a point.
I, excuse me.
This is a personal attack on a city employee, and I do not-
Excuse me, no, it's not.
Both parties will cease, all right? I am the chair of this meeting, this gentleman has the floor, I'll decide. Thank you very much for your interjection, Mr. Ryan. Continue. Please remember, this is a business meeting, and this is not a time for personal attacks.
No, I'm speaking directly to his actions as the city attorney, not a personal attack, but he has, attorney Appicello has qualified in all of the city council meetings and the hearings to quasi-judicial proceedings. He's attempted through that to be able to exclude specific city council members, when in fact, this is a legislative issue, where you're looking for area-wide zoning ordinances, which means less legislative action, and you don't exclude anybody in a legislative action. So, he's attempted to both control and to guide the conversation in a particular direction, and has poisoned the well, in an attempt to divide and conquer the citizens and the city councils. So, again, I urge the city council to take action, to suspend the city attorney on a professional basis, not personal, but on a professional basis. It's his job, he's a member of the bar. This is what he's supposed to do. So, again, I'm gonna recommend that you suspend him without pay, he's poisoned the well, attempted to guide-
All right, thank you, Mr. Rolet.
The situation, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing. I do appreciate that. I'm being as careful as I can. He did not address anything regarding the public hearing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So noted.
Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Jim Hoover, I live at 3150 East Devils Lake Road, I'm a property owner in the city of Lincoln City, pay taxes. We're here tonight talking about VRDs, and I appreciate our city manager and his recent involvement in this issue, but for the record, the consensus committee worked on this for, I think, six years, a long, long period of time. And the recommendations the consensus committee, as I see them in the form we're talking about today, basically are nonexistent, and the consensus committee never came up with VR zones, they came up with yes-no zones. As I'm looking at what we're talking about today, and as I was listening to Mr. Townsend talk about some of the criteria he used in defining where these VR zones would be located, I heard words like, we have some problems with sewer, but I- I heard words like, "We have some problems with sewer," but I never saw a comprehensive map showing where those problems were and where they weren't. Did we decide on these VR zones by where no sewer was present, or are there areas where the sewer is present, but then we decided to include some of those areas in the VR zone and exclude some of them from the VR zone even though they are have, they do have sewer around the lake? I mean, I heard words like, "We're degrading an area by changing it to a VR zone," that seems like a problem with the logistics of how we're doing this, is the consensus committee had a lot of areas included in the yes/no zones, that were included in the yes zones, that just simply by the way we're going about doing this, now we're excluding those areas that were part of the consensus committee's work in saying, you know, "This is what we think they should be." But other times, we're hearing things like, "The consensus committee decided to call the area up at the golf course as a yes zone." I also heard that one area, close to the hospital, a little horseshoe area, apparently the reason why that wasn't included in the VR zone that was before you today is because those people signed a petition, but at the point at which those people signed a petition, I don't even believe VR zones were being talked about at that point, they were yes/no zones, and I didn't know anybody was aware that by signing a petition six months or a year ago, they might be influencing one way or the other where a VR zone yes or a VR zone no was going to be. Those people were responding to a different issue, and that was never presented that I heard of as a criteria that was going to be used at this point to decide where a yes or where a VRD zone would be and a VR zone wouldn't be. You know, I was alluding to earlier when my time ran out, the fact that, you know, this line that we're arbitrarily drawing around, whether it's a little smaller area or very large area, is simply a line, and that if you're on one side of the line in the no zone, you've been impacted in the sense that you can't market your property or use your property in a way that you can supplement your income and make your payment, and the street, or the house across the street is able to. And so, I'm really looking at, you know, how we decided to draw these lines, you know, where is the rationale, where has that been explained to the general public, where has that been a part of the process that they've been allowed to be included in? You know, once again, the problems with sewers in maybe some of the areas, but other areas partially not, I just don't see that as being a real concise scientific method of deciding this, this process. Once again, you know, we have areas where there's one development, where as I read through the comments, the number of the people in the development said, you know, they weren't aware, you know, that they were even going to be considered. It's on the east side of the Rome Road, it's in an area that's very little developed, and I see that development being included, but I see other developments that are in similar situations on the east side of the road that haven't been included in it. Once again, what's the criteria for including one development in the south into Lincoln City on the east side of Highway one oh one in a VR zone? Did we decide that one was special for some reason, that the other developments that are in the same criteria, because they are very little development in them right now, or a large number of houses that are unbuilt? You know, did they get the same application, did they get the same opportunity to lobby or to ask for theirs to be included, so they can increase the marketability of their land? I would just really urge you to take this whole situation and table it until we have a chance to really look at how we're doing this and apply this uniformly. And once again, my biggest concern is that we apply it in a way that really deals with the issue. If there's an issue with a VRD, I want to make sure that for the people in Lincoln City that live next to that VRD, we're actually dealing with it, and we're not just saying, "We're going to allow them here and not allow them there," because that doesn't necessarily guarantee we're going to have a good VRD in the VR zones or a bad VRD in the VR zones. That wasn't a criteria that I heard used in deciding where these were located or where these aren't located. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Hoover? All right. And I'm going to just speak to some of the council again, I'm going to remind you, or, nevermind, I'm going to start this again. First, I agree, we were off task, comments there. I've got a little bit to learn yet about running these portions, this is my first where we've had, I've actually been able to sit in on one of these, and so I do take your counsel advisement, and we will be a little bit stricter about these. When we have a public hearing about a specific matter, I would ask that we stick to that matter, okay? And Counsel Ryan, thank you for your objection. So, Edward Clements? Nope, nope, nope. Oh, okay, well, I have you on the second one also, then.
My name is Larry Armstrong. I live at fifteen seventy southeast Fifty First Street, that's right across the street from the old Taft Grade School that they've just torn down. And I just wanted to make a brief comment about these two hundred and seventy-seven lots, which would be from the northeast and southeast quadrants, that would be moved into the VR zone if you do proceed on this matter. The VRs or the VRDs, I mean, they're important, we all know they're an important economic engine in Lincoln City, and then of course there are problems sometimes with the neighbors and so forth, but the main thing is, if we, if we do, if you do vote down the road to make this whole area on the east side, these two hundred and seventy-seven lots into the VR zone, what we don't know is, it's hard to predict what the results of this would be. It could be very, very good, and, you know, help with some economic activity. On the other hand, in my opinion, I think it's possible that not much would change, because all of these properties are on the east side of one oh one, and they're all at least a ten or twenty block walk to the ocean or the Celeste Bay. So, it's possible that very, very little would change, but it sounds like the way the things are going this evening, that it might be some time before this matter is resolved. And in general, as a person living in the neighborhood, I'm kind of inclined to think it's probably a good idea, but we'll just have to see what happens. That's all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming forward, appreciate it. Oh, thank you, okay, I appreciate that. Ned, I have a note here, in order for your testimony to be in the record, it has to be during the public hearing. Do you want your testimony to be part of the record? If you would like, that's if you want it on the public record, if not, you're okay. But now, we're back to a different, we're back to the matter, I believe you were addressing Mr. Appicello's portion, I need some guidance on that, because this was given during the other, but it's not going to be part of the public record for this.
Public record should be only about the VR zone.
Okay, so that's where I'm going, is, right, so, were you going to address that, or were you just going to go back over what you just had?
I don't, I don't need to go back over, unless you'd like me to, but I'm happy to address the-
Yeah, let's stick to the, let's stick to the zone issue.
Sure, I had not intended to speak on the zone, but I will. I would just urge you, like I think some others have, to discontinue discussion about these VR zones. I happen to be in a unique situation. My, my home in Cutler, which is not in this quadrant, but I'll speak to the subject of the quadrant that you're discussing, was, the dividing line was down the middle of the street of Fleet Avenue, so I'm on, I was on a not VR, no VR zone side, and the people directly across the street are on a yes VR zone side. And so, it points a lot to, you know, some of the discussion about, you know, how does, how is that equitable for, you know, my place that I bought ten years ago when my oldest son was five, as a family investment and a family retreat, to suddenly be devalued and somebody that I can throw a rock across the street, you know, they could, they could be worth thirty percent more. I struggled with that, you know, and I think citywide, that's an issue, so I think it's a, you know, it's applicable to speak even in this other quadrant on this subject. You know, when we first moved or bought our place here, this was a dream from when my wife and I first got married, and we were able to attain it and did it and came and put a lot of money into the local economy, we bought all of our materials here, did everything here to try to better the area. We bought the place next to us that was vaca, rundown home with, it was, it had more rodents in it than it ever had people in it. We bought that, tore it down, and improved that land and sold it. Somebody's just completed a house, I think it'll be occup, they'll get occupancy within the next month. I sold it to them about six years ago, and we've really, you know, we used to come over here and I'd pull into town and I'd just take this deep breath and go, "Oh, we're there," you know, "It's such, such a relaxing retreat." Now, I got to be honest, I don't come to town. I'm so discouraged by all this, I can't tell you the last time I used my home. I never bought it with the intention of making it a VR, but I felt backed against a corner when this whole thing came up, this zone, yes and no, I thought, you know, for crying out loud, I spent, I don't know, three hundred and however many thousand dollars on this place, by the time I remodeled it and everything, I better do the due diligence thing and go get the permit and be grandfathered in. And so, when I went through all that process, I started renting it, and my neighbors across the street said to me, "If you ever go to get a VR, I will fight you tooth and nail." I said, "Oh, you know, I'm sorry, I would never try to be divisive," and they've come to me since, and they've said, "We have never had one problem." Because I'm properly managed, I have a local manager, I take care, I pay what I need to pay to take care of it, I've had not one issue, and the neighbor that told me they'd fight me tooth and nail has come to me and said, "We have had a delightful experience with the people in your place." So, I would encourage you just to put it down, let it go. I think the voters spoke loud and clear on the referendum, and I think it's time to move forward. I'd love to come back to town, where I take that, that big sigh when I first pull into town by McDonald's there, I just kind of, it's like you let alone, then I come spend five hundred bucks a day in town, you know, with my family eating out and doing, spending way more than I should, but I want to do that again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ned, appreciate you standing and changing your testimony there. All right, and we've gone through everyone on the list, anyone else want to speak that is not on the list?
Mayor Williams, I have three letters that have, they've asked for these to be added into the record.
Thank you.
One of them is from Robert and Jerian Haas, one of them is from Gordon and Susan Walker, and then the third one is Ross Smith.
Thank you. Everyone hear that? Everyone heard? Okay, great, thank you. All right. Is there any testimony or comment from representatives of public agencies? Seeing none, okay. So, ORS Section one nine seven dot seven six three, paragraph six A, states that upon request, the council must either grant a continuance for no less than seven days or hold the record open for no less than seven days to permit any participant an opportunity to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence. Does any person who participated desire to request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence? Seeing none. And below them, there's no continuance has been requested and no request has been made to hold the record open, is there a motion?
I would so move that we close the-
Close the public hearing and the record.
Record.
Motion?
Second.
You have a motion and a second to close the public hearing and the record. Any discussion? Hearing none? Can I go a yes/no, or I just got a roll call? What's that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Does the city attorney or staff have any comments concerning legal issues raised during these proceedings, instructions on the applicable law, or legal advice concerning the application of the law into the evidence of the record?
Cover what your options are at this point. You've had a land use hearing and covered the staff report and heard from the public. At this point, you have a proposal to rezone lots on the east side to the VR zone. The VR zone was adopted by council last year, was challenged at Luba, was upheld against that challenge. So, the VR zone is effective, there is no problem with using it. As was noted in the staff report on the other agenda items, there's, there were a bunch of ordinances adopted at the same time, two of those ordinances are no longer in effect because of the referendum. You can proceed with the VR, you can continue. The recommendation from staff essentially is, if you'd like to continue this matter, you've completed the public hearing process, you can continue deliberations on this matter, or you could decide not to proceed. You do have related matters on the agenda. The northwest quadrant ordinance is also on the agenda, so, and I believe the next meeting has, the June twenty-second, has the southwest quadrant deliberations on the agenda. So, it's up to you, you can legally proceed and rezone properties to VR. You could also stop this process because it was a city-initiated amendment, and just stop.
Okay, and if you could clarify for me, just, because I may have misunderstood the Luba decision. If I understood right, it was not necessarily upheld, but it was premature.
Well, that's what Mr. Ross Smith has stated.
That's, I thought that's what I read, not from Mr. Smith.
Yes, the ordinance for, the argument was that the city's, essentially the Oregonians in action argued that we were going to cause all these effects to our commercial lands or industrial lands by rezoning commercial and industrial lands to VR. And essentially, the city argued that we're not doing that. The only thing that ordinance two thousand and fourteen dash twenty-one did was create the zone. So, if they wanted to come to these hearings where we're actually applying it and argue that we were causing all these ill effects, this inconsistency with the comprehensive plan, they could make those arguments now, when we're applying it.
Sure.
Okay, yes, the argument-
Thank you.
-that we made was that they were premature.
Thank you, okay. And this matter is returned to the table for deliberations. Have to close this down? Somewhere in here?
We closed the public hearing and the record.
Record, we did, okay, thank you. Too many pages to read from. All right, counsel, where are you at?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we rezone no east side properties to the VR zone as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to not rezone anything according to Planning Commission recommendations, discussions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
While I don't disagree with the motion, I think I would be more comfortable with withdrawing the whole thing-
I get it.
-the VR zone, that's a fact. We can always do something with the VR zone, but I think at this point, I think we need to withdraw our application for creating these areas until we figure out exactly what we are doing. I have seen a proposal, a rough draft proposal from Mr. Ward, that has some very good points. We have, I have read the Newport ordinance, it has some, we have instructed staff to enforce our current ordinance, which has stood the test of time and law. And at this point, I'm at the feeling after the election that we need to, number one, stop, number two, step back and take a very deep breath, and then number three, try to figure out what we need to do, want to do, or if we want to do anything. So, that's kind of, while I don't disagree with the motion, rather just have a motion to withdraw the applications at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, would that also include the northwest quadrant that is already up for adoption?
Yep. Yep, all of it.
Okay.
All quadrant. I will withdraw my second if you, if you would make that motion.
Can I, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I really, technically, we're really only talking about the east side.
Southwest.
And we do have later on the agenda a proposed ordinance for the northwest, and it would be appropriate to take that action.
So, it would be just, at this point, just the southwest?
Yeah, I'll withdraw my second for that.
No, it's fine. No, it's fine what you did. Your second is fine.
Let's just, let's go, what he just said here, so we still have a motion then from Council Norikis to withdraw, or to apply what planning commission recommended. Was there a second for that? Hearing none. Okay.
I would move that we, now I just forgot how I--
Withdraw the application?
Withdraw the application for the southeast and northeast quadrant maps implementation.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to withdraw the application concerning the northeast and southeast quadrants or the VR rezoning. How's that? Fair?
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion. I've got to agree. I think well said. I think this is definitely, and this is really my first time to sit up here and be able to discuss any of this, and I really think this is that time. I know there was, there's some visceral reaction on both sides. I know there's a real feeling of a waste of time, both sides. And I think this is that time, as Counselor Ryan said, to take that breath. And as Mr. Chandler said, that, you know, now's the time to talk. Now's not the time to react and get angry or throw up our hands, but let's move forward in a way that satisfies the majority of the people. So, we have a, that's my discussion. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I've had a couple of months of travel to have a good deal of time to think about this, this whole situation with VR zones. And I have come to the conclusion that there are too many winners and too many losers with VR zones. I think they're arbitrary, and I don't have any problem if somebody wants to come to the city, Planning Commission, and apply for the use of a VR zone because the zone is in place. And if they can convince their neighbors that it's okay to have a VR zone in a certain place in the city, that's fine with me. But for us to be making those applications, I think, is incorrect. So, I really support doing away with this.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Well said. Further discussion? Okay. We have a motion and a second and close the discussion. Let's go and have a roll call.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Norikis?
Yes.
And Ryan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. We have another public hearing to receive comments, citizen comments on Resolution Number 201512, a resolution, you know, before we begin. Does anyone need a quick break? You want-- All right. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Our phones are still on. Turn it off.
All right, we're going to reconvene. Bikes are live. Thank you, folks, so much. And I believe we finished at? We were on number 10, correct? Public hearing to receive citizen comment on Resolution Number 2015-12, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
In our proposed budget that you'll be considering tonight in the general fund, there's a revenue line item called state revenue sharing of about $130,000. This money comes from the state, but in order for us to receive it, we actually have to pass this, hold a public hearing to provide citizen the ability to comment on whether we should receive this revenue or not and what we should do with it, and also to pass this resolution. So this is a public hearing to receive comment on this particular revenue.
Pull up my... I don't have anything. No. So...
Yeah, it's just an open hearing.
Okay. So, anything else you want to throw in there?
Nope.
Okay. Anyone care to make a comment concerning this matter? Hearing none. Close the hea-- or I need a motion to close the hearing?
So moved. Second.
Is that in record? Motion in record? Or just the, just the motion?
It's a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, motion to close the hearing, okay. Close the public hearing, you have a second? No?
Second.
Second. Have a motion, second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So carried, motion carried. All right. Then we are at, apologies, here we go. To receive citizen comment on Resolution 2015-15, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City adopting the 2015-16 budget.
Mayor and Council, I do have just a few comments on this. So this budget has come to you from the Budget Committee, which approved and has recommended this for your adoption. The items that were moved and approved by the committee are included in this, and I just want to briefly go over those items so that you're aware of the changes from when you first received the budget. The first item was that you proposed in the budget that the passes that are provided to employees be paid to the community center from the city's budgets. That has been done, and it's included throughout the budget in the different line items. The Budget Committee proposed, made a motion approved and is now recommended that we transfer $10,000 from seasonal salaries to police recruitment line item. That also was done. $100,000 was switched from the unappropriated fund balance to go into other consultants, which would look to identify and study water features in the city, additional water features throughout the city. And then they also included $10,000 to go from the contingency to other supplies that would be used for microphone upgrades. Hopefully, we'll find that we don't actually need that, that the working that we're doing on this will fix out those problems. There was much discussion that took place regarding $170,000 property taxes and so forth. In the end, the Budget Committee has moved and approved and is recommending to you that $170,000 from the additional capital reserve be transferred to the street capital fund balance to be used for street overlays, and that is also included in the budget. Finally, one other thing that was not actually part of the budget, but it was a discussion item. It's a policy issue that they wanted you to consider, and that is a review of the culinary center. And ask that Mr. Ed Drysted and I bring back that review. Since that time, as we have looked at this, there's also came a question to us as what would be the criteria we would use for evaluating that. We also, Mr. Drysted and I discussed how much time is needed. So what we would suggest that you do tonight, in addition to adopting the budget, is also to make a motion instructing the staff to review the effectiveness and efficiency of the culinary center and give us 120 days to do that review. The methodology that we're proposing to use is five-fold. First is to look at direct revenue trends. That's the revenue that is brought in through the culinary services, programs, and activities. The second is to look at indirect revenues and in-town spending by out-of-town guests. The third is the publicity generated through paid media, or through what would be the equivalent of a paid media, a paid media advertisement. The fourth is expense versus direct, indirect revenue and media equivalency. And then the fifth one we have are a couple of qualitative measures that we would want to add into that review, and that is the utili-- the first of those is the utilization of the culinary center versus the original goals of the culinary center. How closely are we to operating as it was originally envisioned? And the second is the potential utilization of the culinary center with community partners, not just simply solely by the city. So those are the items that we would use to review, the methodology we would use to review the culinary center. Just a few other items pertaining to the budget. The property tax is forecast to increase by 5%. This is due primarily to in the taxable assessed, increase in the taxable assessed value, and also the property, increased property tax as a result of the annexation from Rhodes End. The transient room tax is forecast to increase by 11%, and then, as we discussed earlier in the meeting, there is a 4% water rate increase included in this and a 6% sewer rate included in this. It's projected that the budget, or the budget includes a 3% increase in salaries. The medical insurance is expected to increase by 3.9%, and then there are some increases in the employee retirement known as the purse. Some other things, another item that is spread throughout the budget in the various funds and departments, and that is the comprehensive plan update. That's scheduled to go over a two-year period with much of the work taking place in this fiscal year. The total budget for the city is approximately $41 million, and it consists of multiple different funds that are used to account for the spending of the city's revenues in different areas. Those include governmental funds, which are tax-supported funds, such as the general fund. They include utility funds, the water and sewer funds. The other funds are included in capital projects funds. Those deal with the infrastructure improvement and expansions and expansions. We have some that are in the bond funds, which account for the city's indebtedness. And then finally, we have one fund that's in the Internal Service Fund, in which the customers for that fund is the city. We have an IT department, and we have a vehicle maintenance department that charge the other departments for their services.
Do you have anything you want to add? Nope.
If I might. Concerning the culinary center, one other question that I might want you to ask is, is this necessary? We will now, as soon as the kitchen is done at the community center, or cultural center, we'll have three licensed kitchens under city ownership. Do we need three commercial kitchens? We have the community center, the cultural center, and the culinary center, each having licensed kitchens. And is there a need, or could we combine them somehow?
So that's all I had on that. Okay.
Yes, yes, please, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chandler, could you provide us with a list of the criteria that you just recently read off?
Yeah. Do you, I can make copies and send them to you, or do you want me to just read them again?
Copy would be fine.
I'll make copies and send them to you. Please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Mr. Chandler, I would encourage you to work collaboratively with Sharon so she feels a part of the process rather than a target of the process.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for bringing that up, and I do want to make sure that it is fully understood, that I have nothing but the deepest respect for Ms. Wiest and the work she's done, and this is in no way a reflection upon her, okay? It's a simple dollar and cents thing for me. Sir.
Yeah, Honored. I want to address something that was published about a month ago now. The News Times reported on the Budget Committee hearing and entirely misquoted me if, which, yeah. I just wanted on the record that if people want to know what I said, they should go to the recording, not the News Times.
And that's at LincolnCity.org.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Mr. Chandler, could you restate your suggestion for a motion regarding review?
Yes. The motion would be something along the lines that the staff is instructed to conduct a review of the culinary center for its efficiency and effectiveness, for its efficiency and effectiveness, and to come back with recommendations concerning its operation and alternatives if, and alternatives to its operation. I think that was, I think that was something similar to what I had said before, and we ask that you give us 120 days to complete that review.
So moved.
Open your eyes, I see. All right, we have a motion and a second, as just, as just said by Mr. Chandler. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chandler, when the Budget Committee transferred funds to streets, I believe some of those transfers could have changed the long-range planning. I'm wondering if we can get a new long-range forecast based on these changes that were made.
We sure can. As a matter of fact, our Public Works Director has been working on that, and also to come back with where those extra funds would be used. So we will bring something back to you.
Thank you.
Should include the general fund as well, because the general fund is the one that's losing money.
And the projection on the general fund. Yes, we will bring that back as well.
Any, any comments from the public on this? Resolution for the City of Lincoln City adopting the 2015-16 budget? Seeing none. Seeing none. Go ahead and accept a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we're in public hearing. Oh, brother, okay. I'm sorry?
Okay.
You. Number 12 here. To receive citizen comment on Resolution 2015-14, a resolution adopting the supplemental budget of the City of Lincoln City, Oregon, for the fiscal year 2014-2015, as approved by the City Council and making appropriations.
One of the changes, and Debbie will explain this a little more in detail, one of the changes that we made this, to this year's budget, is that we incorporated the dispatch services into the general fund. Prior to that, it had been, it had had its own fund. In order to, in order to really do a good comparable of the past, we're asking that this budget be amended so that it also incorporates the dispatch into the general fund.
It just facilitates the historical comparison a year quicker than if we did not do this. The actual change to the expenditures does not change.
Budget.
Supplemental budget moves this current year, the dispatch budget, out of the dispatch fund.
No, I mean, that was the whole thing.
That's the whole thing.
That's the whole thing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted, I was waiting for another...
Because it significantly, you know, it's more than 10% of the fund, we have to hold a public hearing on it.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move we close public hearing.
Invite the public? Invite the public to?
Yes, that's right.
I appreciate that. It's wishful thinking.
Hello.
Appreciate it. We're going to do that right now. Anyone care to speak concerning this issue? Seeing none. Oh, okay. Sorry.
I tried.
Take a round.
And just for the record, we will be sticking on topic, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
When it, when it comes to budgeting, it's always the here and the now of it. I think the one thing that I would like to see in future budgets from our finance people and, and City Manager Ron Chandler, is to take a look at financial forecasting, because what we have right now, as far as an economy goes, and those folks that have assets in the market, is you have a Dow Jones trading near an all-time high at 18,000, and having worked in the financial markets for more than 18 and a half years, I can tell you where markets go from an all-time high. And it usually isn't higher. It usually isn't pretty, and it usually is dramatically lower, much like we experienced in 2000. We went from an internet bubble. By the time we got to Election Day in November, the Nasdaq was down 82%. No small feat. So when you talk about running an organization the size of the City of Lincoln City and taking care of the citizens' money, then I would like to see a forecast in there. What happens if, in fact, we see something from an all-time high, as we are now at 18,000? What happens if the Dow drops to 10,000? What happens to the assets? What happens to the citizenry? How well-prepared are the citizens to be able to pay increasing property taxes, water, sewer taxes, and the like? What happens to the excess property? At over 50 million, all of a sudden it's 25. These are dramatic hits to the citizens of Lincoln City, because these are citizen funds. And if they're going to be well-managed, they need to be hedged, they need to be protected, and they need to be taken care of. So when the issue of rightsizing the number of employees for Lincoln City, I behoove you to take a look and say, where are we going to be a year from now? What happens if the Dow drops from 18,000 down to 10,000? Play the what-if scenarios, and then put some insulation in there to be able to protect the citizens, because, you know, a couple of meetings ago, I heard the conversation on property taxes. Well, Lincoln City, five bucks a thousand. No, it's not. If you own a piece of property in Lincoln City, you pay all the taxes, which is...
Mr. Earl, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you real quick here.
Okay.
We're talking about the budget, moving from the budget for dispatch from the Public Safety Fund to the general...
And all of these funds are paid by the citizens of Lincoln City, so we need to take a look at the big picture. I understand you're looking at one item, but we do need to take a look at the big picture when we're looking at a supplemental budget, or we're looking at the big picture to make sure that finances are properly managed. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Anyone else? You get a chance to speak? Thank you so much. All right, so now...
I would make that motion again.
All righty.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. All right, moving along. Ordinances. Uh, boy. Okay. Are we reading this one here? Okay. Ordinance 2015-02, first reading. Ordinance 2015-02, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan map to change the Comprehensive Plan map designation from the single-family residential R5 district to the vacation rental VR district, and amending the zoning map to change the zoning map designation from the single-family residential R15 zone to the vacation rental VR zone on 172 properties in the northwest quadrant of the city. This is where Davis and I are precluded from being part of this one. Again, it's just a first reading, right? I'm not, we're not...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move that President Sprague chair this item on the agenda.
Is this a point of discussion, or we just, you're just having a reading?
In the past, I mean, you've, you've both been recused on this matter due to council rules, probably be appropriate for the council president to handle it.
Do you want to read it again?
I...
If it's just going to be a reading tonight?
I believe we're at the point where, earlier in the meeting...
Mr. Davis and I will begrudgingly recuse ourselves at this point.
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Council President. I would make a motion that, rather than reading this ordinance, that we, the city withdraw its application for rezoning in the northwest quadrant.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Norakas?
No.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Norakas?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Norakas?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
And Ward?
Yes.
And carry.
Resolution 2015-12, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
I would move that we adopt Resolution 2015-12.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2015-12. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Norakas?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
And Ward?
Yes.
And carry.
Resolution 2015-13, a resolution setting forth water and sewer rates.
Mayor, I would move that we adopt Resolution 2015-13.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2015-13. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Norakas?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
And Norakas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution and a second to adopt Resolution 2015-14, any discussion? Hearing none. Do I need a roll call on that one? I'm sorry? Yeah, we have a second.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Norakas?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
And Walke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-12, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
I would move that we adopt Resolution 2015-12.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2015-12. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Norakas?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
And Ward?
Yes.
And carry.
Resolution 2015-13, a resolution setting forth water and sewer rates.
Mayor, I would move that we adopt Resolution 2015-13.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2015-13. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Norakas?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-14, a resolution adopting the supplemental budget of the City of Lincoln City, Oregon, for the fiscal year 2014-15, as approved by the City Council and making appropriations.
So moved, that we adopt Resolution 2015-14.
I second it.
Have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2015-14. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Norakas?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-15, adopting the budget.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2015-15, adopting the budget.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2015-15. Any discussion? I have some. There are portions that I objected to during the Budget Committee hearing. I still hold those objections. I will vote for this budget, but I do want it noted that there was quite a bit of dissent on a lot of these items, and it was, by all accounts, a very well-discussed, well-thought-out budget process, and I want to commend everyone who was part of that. And not to not mention anyone in particular in the city, I know Ms. Mamon worked hard on it, and Mr. Tierney, you made it just so understandable, and I really appreciate that. It was a complex issue. So, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
And Norakas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Special Order of Business...
This requires, this requires once a year. If you would like more than that, I'm happy to do that.
I would, I would be happy seeing, it doesn't have to be hugely detailed, but I think I would like to see something more than once a year.
Okay.
Maybe quarterly. I don't know if I need a motion or if you just give it to me, I'm happy with that. Counsel, do you have a thought on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move that we adopt resolution 2015-11.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution, oh, I lost it. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do I need a roll call on that one? I'm sorry? Yeah, we have a second.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
And Walke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-12, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
I would move that we adopt resolution 2015-12.
Second?
I have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution 2015-12. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
And Ward?
Yes.
And carry.
Resolution 2015-13, a resolution setting forth water and sewer rates.
Mayor, I would move that we adopt resolution 2015-13.
Second?
I have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution 2015-13. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-14, a resolution adopting the supplemental budget of the city of Lincoln City, Oregon, for the fiscal year 2014-15 as approved by the city council and making appropriations.
So moved, that we adopt resolution 2015-14.
I second it.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution 2015-14. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Norakis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
And Ward?
Yes.
And carry.
Resolution 2015-15, adopting the budget.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution 2015-15, adopting the budget. Second?
I have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution 2015-15. Any discussion? I have some. There are portions that I objected to during the budget committee hearing. I still hold those objections. I will vote for this budget, but I do want it noted that there was quite a bit of dissent on a lot of these items and it was a, by all accounts, a very well discussed, well thought out budget process and I want to commend everyone who was part of that and not to not mention anyone in particular in the city. I know Ms. Mamon worked hard on it and Mr. Tierney, you made it just so understandable and I really appreciate that. It was a complex issue. So, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
And Norakis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Special Order of Business Committee appointment for outside agency requests.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
A little bit of history on that. In the last two years, Mr. Norakis and I and one other counselor, Henry Quant, was, were appointed by the mayor to review those and make a recommendation to the council and I'd be happy to serve on that. I can't speak for Chester, but I would be happy to do that again.
Okay. Anyone else care to volunteer for the position?
I would as well, your honor.
Okay. Not hearing a lot from the other end of the aisle here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
As for you guys, as part of your, I think you got good microphone. As part of the process, were you going to interview them?
No.
No.
We've already seen their proposals.
Right. Now-
Yeah, for me to be involved, I'd want to interview, so I'm a no-go.
Yeah, I think we discussed that process of maybe amending that at some point, that we do interview each applicant. I don't think we have that in our works now. Is that right, Mr. Chandler?
It's really up to you on that if you, if there's no specific procedure. If you would like to interview them, you can. If you don't wish to, if you do like to interview them, the method I would suggest is that you hold a meeting, invite each of the applicants to come in, give a 10-minute presentation. That will consolidate the time on that, but there's no requirement for that.
Okay, and as this, as this is my first time around with this, is, have they been promised any kind of timeframe? I mean, I know some of these people are really hoping for some money soon if we introduce a interview process at this point.
I don't know that I can say for sure, but not that I'm aware of. I'd have to look to see.
No, the money doesn't go out to them until the budget's adopted and the fiscal year begins, so it, there's plenty of time.
Okay, great. Well, then, Counselor, do you want to, I mean, what's the thought? Do they have an interview?
I prefer not to do that. They've had an opportunity to come to the budget committee hearings and speak, which is the way they've done it in the past and I didn't see anybody that came forward and made, made a presentation. There's plenty of good information in each one of the proposals and I think that they're sufficient to not have to have another meeting.
Counselor Norakis?
I agree, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Most of these organizations are entirely volunteer and I think they've all put in quite a bit of time into their presentation that they, in writing, and I think it, it could be organizations that expect them to put some more time in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. I realize that we're probably not going to interview them, but part of the process, I would think, to make a good decision is be able to ask the applicants questions and when you have just what they presented to you, it's a static document, you have to just take it at face value. I just think it would be a better process if we had a chance to interact with them and give a, get us a better flavor of, you know, what their needs are.
Well, I guess then my question comes down to is, is this something the council has to agree on or the committee that's going to be moving forward? Does the committee just say, this is how we want to do it or not do it? Or do I just say that?
The council directs, but without that direction, then the committee can choose how they would like to proceed.
Okay. So as I'm gathering, the committee would like to just go ahead with as is now, if indeed you are the committee, so.
Two, two of us on the committee.
Right, and I would like to be part of that also.
I'd prefer that there were three of us.
Yeah, so, all right. So then, do I need a motion or anything like that?
No, it's, it's an appointment.
It's an appointment? Okay, so the committee will be Counselor Norakis, Counselor Sprague, and myself. And we're moving on. And thank you for your input.
And I would, I would suggest that at the conclusion of this meeting that we meet back here and, and set up a date.
Okay, sounds good. All right. City manager, city attorney reports. We are near the goal line, guys.
One foot mark, I'm not going to mess it up.
All right, fair enough. Mr. Attorney?
I will state that last year we had a significant number of comments by Mr. Ross Smith during the VRD hearings and many of those comments were addressed in the written findings adopted by council. Today, Mr. Smith submitted some written documents which he entered into the VRD record and you had two gentlemen come to the podium and make some rather malicious statements concerning me relying on those, those statements. I reviewed Mr. Smith's document and I'm genuinely unconcerned with the substance of his assertions. So, while I'll have to address those matters privately, I just wanted to assure you that I did not see anything of substance which was concerning to me in Mr. Ross Smith's submissions. And that's all I'll say on the matter.
Thank you. Reports from standing committees? Do we have any? No, we don't have any. Okay. Additional comments from citizens present on non-agend items? We were that close, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Jim Hoover again, 3150 East Devilslake Road. You, you ruled on a couple of things tonight or made decisions on a couple of things tonight that are kind of interconnected with a committee that I'm on in the city of Lincoln City and that's the ADA committee. One was the intersection at 22nd and Surf Avenue and the other was the, I guess, boardwalk slash bridge on West Devilslake Road that fills in a section of the Head to Bay Trail. The process of nudging government towards accountability is never a fun one and never one that's rewarded by people being happy when they're nudged. Both those projects, as Paul Harvey would say, have the rest of the story. Surf Avenue and 22nd is the corner where the Lincoln County School District last year spent part of our bond money to improve the school and in fact, the school district put in sidewalks at the corner of Surf and 22nd Avenue and those sidewalks, instead of being like normal development at the edge of the right-of-way with curbs and gutters, were allowed as part of the project to be put onto the school district's private property. And in doing that, as a member of the ADA committee, I filed a complaint with the ADA coordinators showing them that they in fact had approved a corner improvement that didn't have any ADA access down onto the Head to Bay Trail, but also no access at all onto the Head to Bay Trail. And so instead of the school district including as part of their project, creating the proper access onto Surf Avenue and 22nd, now the city of Lincoln City is funding the, the project and is going to try to make some corrective actions to a project that's less than two years old that went through planning, went through the entire permit process and for some reason just kind of slipped through the cracks. The Head to Bay Trail is another interesting project. The Head to Bay Trail was a project that was partially funded by the state of Oregon Parks Department, I believe, and there was a very specific caveat in there that it be designed to ADA accessibility. And once again, as a member of the ADA committee and as a private citizen, I put in a complaint that the ADA accessibility on the Head to Bay Trail didn't meet the criteria that it was supposed to be designed to. It was interesting, the city of Lincoln City hired Bob Pike, who's an attorney out of Portland, to come down and do an assessment of the trail. Bob Pike made some recommendations as to what wasn't working, but those recommendations have never been made public, never been made available to me individually or to the ADA committee as a person of the ADA committee. Then the city spent about $100,000 to go through and evaluate all the facilities in Lincoln City to determine where we had barriers to accessibility and that netted about an 8,000-page report. Interesting thing is the last ADA committee meeting, we found out that Bob Pike's evaluation of the Head to Bay Trail wasn't included in that report and so now they are hiring the consultant to come back out and actually evaluate the rest of the facilities that have been excluded from that. So I would just urge the council, as you look at these projects, as you understand how this money is being spent, to add the emphasis to make sure that when we spend this money, we're not having to come back and later spend additional money in order to comply with ADA because there's large sections of the Head to Bay Trail on West Devilslake Road that will have to be rebuilt because in the urgency of spending free money, we built a project like we built a lot of projects in Lincoln City that don't meet the criteria that then we're going to have to come back like 22nd and Surf and spend additional public funds in order to bring up to the ADA standards and provide not only people with access, but children access to get down off the curb and sidewalk, down onto the street and cross the street.
If I could ask a question, you referenced to Mr. Pike and I'm not familiar with this. You saying the city did pay him for recommendations?
The city of Lincoln City hired Bob Pike in response to 16 complaints that I made in order to bring up the point that we were building projects that didn't meet the-
And you're saying that we did not receive his report?
Well, we received his report, but his report was not part of the $100,000 that we spent to evaluate the facilities in Lincoln City.
But we do have the report and it is a public record.
Well, so now what we're doing is we're now hiring that company we paid $100,000 to go back and do the facilities that he had done initially. There's about six or seven, I think, facilities. And so we have a partial report on facilities that now we're going back and we're filling in the gaps. And one of those big gaps is the whole West Devilslake Head to Bay Trail.
I'd sure like, if you could, forward something, what you've just said to us, me, so I could follow up.
So, so the point of this is just to make you aware that, that there's funds. Now, I've heard a figure of $20 million floated around. To date, I've asked the question several times in our committee, you know, what the consultants estimate of facility improvements are required because they actually put dollar values to each item and they prioritized each item and to date, I haven't seen that, but I thought that would have been very important as part of the budget committee hearings because if there's really $20 million in liabilities that we have, some of which are projects that are recently built and some of which are projects that are older, the need to fund those is really important and that relates to what we're doing today on 22nd and Surf and also what we're doing on this bridge, bikeway, parkway over the West Devilslake Road. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Always good information. Anyone else? We can close that. Announcements or comments by city council?
As I, you know, look across the aisle, I still see some of, some people I know through the consensus project and through that process where we both, both sides started at polar opposites, we worked good spiritedly through the process and as a result, we built friendships even though they were on opposite sides and there's people there that I met that originally we were diametrically opposed, they're people that I respect and care a great deal about. I would encourage through this process that we try to do it, if we're going to be successful doing it, we have to do it good spiritedly and have caring and the ability to work with each other and even if it's people that we don't particularly care for at a time, we can work together towards a common project. I would plead with all of you, any of you, not to attack city employees. This is a volunteer position, at least for us on the council, and I care a great deal about the city employees and no one should come to work just to be attacked. So if we could stick to the items that we are concerned about and work through it together, that's the only way to get through this and that's all I have to say and I hope I have a consensus from the council when I do say this. Thanks. You're here.
Anyone else?
I, I had a question. Wondering, Mr. Chandler, when we might see the LID back on the agenda?
It's actually the next meeting.
Next meeting? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Like to, I'd like to publicly thank Representative Gomburg for his work in attempting to bring a regional employment center that would service people throughout Lincoln, Tillamook, and Clatsop County. He's attempting to and working toward bringing that here in Lincoln City and expanding the office that we have downstairs and I appreciate all the work he's done and want to thank him publicly. I also would like the public to know that the Bene Brith camp has a day camp this summer and that they have financial aid available for people who feel they cannot afford it. The number that one could call for financial assistance or any, any other information, day camp director is Sari Tullis, T-U-L-L-I-S, and her number is 541-994-2218. So anybody who would like to send children to the day camp here in Lincoln City, please contact them. I think it's a great service they're providing and a very generous service as well and I thank them.
If I might piggyback on that, they really are doing an amazing outreach with special needs kids and that's a large part of my working background is special needs community and to integrate them as much as possible is a, is a very worthwhile goal for everybody, not just for the kids who, who have the disabilities, but those who may not get a chance to interact socially and to just kind of lower those, those walls down and it's a great, great thing they're doing. Anyone else? Oh, I've got a list. First off, I wanted to thank Mayor Charlie Hales for inviting me out along with some other mayors from around the state to participate in the Rose Festival Parade. We got to walk 500 miles and it was 180 degrees and, but it was, it was an amazingly great time. Got to interact with some great mayors from around the town, got to spend, oh, a good half hour just sitting with Mayor Hales discussing things, got to run into, Governor Brown was there, meeting with us all and so that was a great opportunity and I thank him for that. I wanted to say thank you to the staff for the, the kind words and the card after my treatment. Let everyone know I'm doing great, losing weight, blood pressure's down. Get to your doctor if you need help. Da-da-da, I wrote that. Oh, celebrate recovery Tuesday night, Faith Baptist Church. It's a faith-based recovery program, people dealing with alcohol and drug issues. I get to cook on there Tuesday night, so come on out 6:00 PM, free meal and then a good program afterwards. We have the outlet mall, oh, I'm sorry, is now the Lincoln City Outlet ribbon cutting service ceremony at 11 o'clock on the 10th. That is Wednesday, tomorrow? Yes, thank you. Chinook Winds is celebrating their 20th anniversary on the 18th. That'll be at 6:00 PM Thursday, the 18th. Fireworks and always a good show from them. I want to piggyback too on kudos to Representative Gomburg. I was able to go to Salem and attend with, with the Prophet family. Representative Gomburg introduced a bill to the Health and Human Services Committee mandating that hospitals provide E. coli testing upon presentation of symptoms. Right now, it's a option and that option cost a child her life. So it was, it was a good time to be there, talk and hear, and hear the testimony and again, thanks to Representative Gomburg for pushing that. Nothing's going to happen this year because we're so late in the legislative session, but it will be moving forward right at the beginning of the pack. On that note, I do want to ask, and I'm not asking for a motion tonight, but something that occurred to me when we were in the budget hearings is we had, Mr. Baird made a motion and nobody seconded it. And while we were fiddling around with other things, I looked up the idea of the second in parliamentary procedure and I'm finding that it's pretty much a thing of the past. It's been dropped almost universally, a requirement for the second. When I was down at the Prophet hearing, it doesn't exist in the, in the Oregon House or Senate. It's, we have a motion, you read the motion, discussion, any objection, if no objection, vote. And so just as a way to kind of streamline things, I would ask council to consider that. Maybe we can bring it up for another discussion point, but I, I think the, the second is So it was, it was nice, and they had to go through a lot. I do not want to be a senator. And then, one thing that City Manager Chandler and I, and I think others have discussed, is the possibility that perhaps we all take a weekend, or find a day, if nothing else, to have a retreat, to sit maybe and talk about our goals for the coming year, the coming years. I've reached out to the League of Oregon Cities, and they have offered to help people, have people come and facilitate, or mediate, or coach us, so I just want to kind of get a sense from the council if that's something you'd like to move forward with, and if you have a sense of, I don't know if it's been in the past, if the council has done a weekend, a day, what are your thoughts? It could be helpful.
Mr. Mayor? In the past, we've got, city councils have met in the Northwest Conference Room with a facilitated half-a-day meeting, or whatever, probably a half-a-day meeting, and discuss council goals.
Do you see any value in being away from City Hall?
No. I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would support us getting together and talking about goals, for sure.
Okay, well, then I'll present that to someone from the League of Oregon Cities, say, "Here's kind of the feeling," see what they say, and then bring it back to you. Work? Okay. I'm done.
May I interject?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor? May I invite Director Gail Kimberling up here to talk about the summer program at the Community Center?
You may.
Did you see me making hand gestures back there? Gail Kimberling with the Lincoln City Community Center. I would also like to say, we have a, our rec. kids' summer day camp begins the Monday after school is out, so that's June 15th, I believe, and it operates from 7:45 to 6:00 PM daily out of Ocean Lake School. We have very reasonable rates. DHS support is also available for families who need assistance attending that program. You can sign up by the half-day, by the day, by the week. If you sign up ahead of time, you do get a discount. It goes all summer, all the way through until Labor Day weekend. The children are kept active. You'll see them walking all over the community, visiting City Hall, the library, the bowling alley, the beach, the parks. They come swimming every day, so it's a very active camp. It's called trekking, and we are also inclusive. Children with special needs are greatly welcomed. We make accommodations or modifications wherever needed. It's open to children ages 5 to 11, and if you would like more information, give us a call at 541-994-2131.
If I might, concerning special needs students, are you receiving any extra funding or support for another caregiver at that time, or do they bring a caregiver from the school?
We make modifications on a case-by-case basis, so I...
Well, I ask because my son was a counselor, and he was telling me some of the challenges, and with that many kids and keeping them all safe, and I just want to make sure that, and I'm not criticizing the program, but I know what it's like to hurt a bunch of kids, and when you have a couple that really needs some extra attention, I'd like to know that there's someone there, or we're looking to that goal.
As I said, we make, we make that decision on a case-by-case basis. We have a very small teacher-to-child ratio, so all the children are very well-supervised the whole time. So beyond that, I can't answer specifics on that question.
Okay, but there's no other, no other agencies involved in supporting those kids besides the city?
Again, we make that decision on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, so on a case-by-case basis, do, have we reached out to outside agencies for that?
To some degree, yes, in the past.
Okay, that's all I'm asking. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? With that, this meeting is adjourned. That wasn't so bad.
We got through it, then...
Thirty, that's...